Policy committee meeting for Friday, May 1st, 2020. The time is exactly 5:30 PM. The first item on our agenda is the distance learning policy. This is actually going to be our third consecutive meeting. We had a meeting on the 16th, the 23rd, and then today, May 1st, Friday. I firstly want to thank all the policy committee members and everyone else that is joining us. We've never had a meeting that I've heard of on a Friday night, but we really felt it's important to continue to work on this policy. We will have more discussion this evening and hopefully we can have some type of action as well. Both Frank, Yvette, and Brenda, we've worked on revisions, the policy committee. They took all that information back and worked on revising the committee there.
Think we lost Heidi.
Is it me or Heidi's gone? Okay.
Heidi froze. Hopefully she'll come back on. Okay, there you are. Heidi, you froze.
Yeah, I know. I thought I'd keep going even though I froze. Kind of like the show's got to go on, right? You've got to keep talking. So that's exactly what I did. But before I switch it over to you, Frank, I know that we've worked on some other, or looked at some other policies. Portland, Canton, we also looked originally at New Canaan. They had a very basic policy, but that kind of got the ball rolling on this. So I think from all the input from policy members, as well as Frank, Brenda, and Yvette, I think we can really come up with a very concrete and solid policy regarding this. So Frank, I will switch this over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Heidi. Hi, everybody. So the group of us have done quite a bit of revision work on this since we last met. And Maura's email last night included an agenda with the most revised draft for your preview prior to tonight. I came up with revisions key at the top of the policy. And I've just color-coded the different changes so that we could stay on track. And each individual that's been responsible for those adjustments can speak to them in some detail tonight. So you'll see here, purple are specialized learning revisions that Yvette will speak to in a little while. The green highlighted items are curriculum grading revisions that Brenda Myers has made and will speak to tonight. We don't have Brenda Williams here. I didn't think it was necessary. The privacy language that we've come up with and that we have shared with parents has worked, that's been contributed by Yvette and Brenda and Brenda and others. So there's some of that language that's highlighted in blue toward the bottom of the policy. So you'll have an opportunity to review that. And then the yellow highlights are the changes that I have made that we have talked mostly about. There are a couple of additional points that I want to draw your attention to before we start to move into some of those other department area revisions. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And let me know if that's fairly easy for you to see, or whether you need that to be enlarged at all.
Can we make that a little larger, Frank? Do you mind if you can?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, let's go to 150 and see if that works. How's that?
Better. Yep.
Frank, was this the same attachment that was in the packet? Or is this edited since the packet?
This, these changes are changes that you would have seen in the attachment in last night's email. I'm not sure if you're talking about a packet from a time earlier than yesterday.
You don't have to look and see. I looked at Maura's packet. I'm not sure when Maura sent it out.
I think this was more, yeah, I think this is Maura's package. This is what I have. What you're showing here, at least on the first page, is what I have.
Okay, if you see revisions key at the top, you have the right document.
Okay.
So the first change that I made was to shift some of that COVID-19 language up at the top of the policy. This is really the spirit of the policy, which is to do our best to, first, to acknowledge the access and equity issues that are front and center when we close like this. And that, you know, we're aware of it and seeking to mitigate that whenever we can. There's just a slight tweak in this second paragraph. And I'll tell you what I changed and why I added it. So here, starting with "or", there's been some news articles and some early discussions around how schools would return back into buildings. And the early indicators are that it's very possible that districts will need to reduce their student populations in order to maintain social distancing and to minimize the possibility of community transmission of COVID-19. So you'll see here that everything up until "or" remains the same. But I've added, "Or when a school or district must operate, traditional brick and mortar classrooms at less than 100% of students and/or staff capacity in order to comply with the governor's emergency orders." So we don't know yet what orders may be in place post-May 20th. But there have been a couple of articles that we have shared with principals in which the experts are talking about staggered schedules, A/B schedules, bringing in half of the student population on a daily basis and having half of that student population work remotely from home in order to bring the class sizes down to 10 to 12. So I figured, since we're into this policy, we may want to consider this. Because there's a real possibility that we could be operating in a hybrid world come fall or winter with individual schools or the full district needing to operate the building under some government order to reduce the number of students in the class. So this should basically take care of that fact that the district will follow the governor's orders and they will, you know, comply with those orders and will teach students both who are in classrooms and those who are required to stay home on certain days. I don't believe there were changes in these next two items.
Hey Frank, there were. The second highlighted paragraph, we were going to add, there would be set windows during the day for which students would be logged in, but assignments could be completed with flexibility. You're going to add that to the end of this paragraph.
Was it this paragraph? Let me just take a look down a little further.
I recall the same thing Erica pointed out in the same place.
It was added in the paragraph above that. So there's a virtual, it says where we'll build a schedule, but that there would be a flexibility.
Brenda, can you point me to the?
Scroll down just a little more.
Oh.
Right here. Virtual, yeah, virtual online program delivery system, increase accessibility and flexibility in the delivery of instruction.
That's, can we have that say also in assignments? Because delivery and instruction is one thing, but completion of assignments is another.
Great.
Brenda, did you have a comment on that?
No, that would be great.
Okay, so flexibility in the delivery of instruction and learning or and?
And completion of assignments.
Completion of assignments goes up with the schedule in the paragraph above it.
I guess.
I've added it here.
I think I agree with Yvette. It should be in both places.
Okay.
So where you say, "The district may impose windows of time for the day for students to be logged on to, for attendance-taking and engagement and participation. And it is recognized that flexibility may be required or, you know, may be appropriate for completion of specific assignments."
Perfect.
You need to put in completion. The flexibility may be.
Be appropriate for completion. Thank you.
Can we take out the word "specific"? Can it just be general to assignments? Anybody have any problems with that?
I don't think that makes a real difference. Happy to remove that.
The only question I put out there is, do we need, and I'm asking Brenda, do we need some additional language in terms of how much flexibility? You know, if it goes past a marking period when a kid can get an incomplete? I think the, I think our purpose here is to say, while there are windows of time that, that parents know that staff and students should be logged on, we want flexibility on the deadlines. But when, you know, do we need to define what appropriate means beyond the marking period? Or is that too specific for this language?
I think it might be too specific.
I agree. I think it might be as well, but. Okay. All right, Frank, do you want to continue on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So scrolling down here, I had not struck this. I want to check in with you guys before doing so. This is the paragraph that outlines high school graduation requirements. You know, I think there may be portions of this that we want to remove, like offered by institutions of higher education that are accredited. I think we may want to get away from that language.
Why?
We had, oh, Godfrey, did you say why?
Correct.
We had talked about separating these policies in two and doing an emergency policy. And then at some point, doing a distance learning policy, which would be the typical place that we would be adding this language. You'll see below that there are some strikes in other areas. For now, I'll go ahead and strike this. Is there anything in this paragraph that you think we should just get rid of since we're here?
Well, the only thing is, I asked you, Yvette, is, are we, would there be an instance where we're bringing out, bringing in more contractors that we would need to have these credentials included for distance learning?
No, because if we brought in providers, it would be under our standing contract that requires them to have certain credentials anyway.
Okay.
So although this is a lengthy paragraph, its intention is to say one thing. And that is that the Board of Education recognizes that the work done during distance learning is equal to and eligible for high school credit. I think by putting in all the As and Bs and Cs is really not the point here. But the point is, is that you're acknowledging that we are going to award high school credit for those students engaged in distance learning. I think to go into the college work right now is a whole different question. That's about what will you allow as a substitute for a Norwalk Public Schools course? And I didn't think we really wanted to go down that road.
I agree with you. And I think based upon that fact, number two is probably the line that we would want to strike. The other components of this paragraph are actually probably quite important, which is what Brenda just talked about. The equivalency of the work, whether it's online or whether it's happening, the fact that the teachers have Connecticut certifications. I think it makes good sense to leave the rest of this in.
I don't think in Norwalk, we actually allow number three. We are not allowing students to just simply take exams in substitution for credits. So substituting achievement on a passing score on a series of exams approved by the State Board of Education. Like, we don't do that in Norwalk.
Do you think we should be? I don't want to start a conversation or a debate, but this is a key, you know, motto policy? Or is this something that we would debate in a traditional distance learning policy?
Not as part of a distance learning emergency procedure.
Okay.
I have a question. And so, you know, maybe Brenda or Yvette can answer this more so around students that are in a situation where they may age out, you know, in this time. I don't know how we've captured that in a flexible timeline, you know, for kids who are on the brink of aging out just so they can be captured on a flexible timeline to complete the work.
So in terms of kids meeting high school graduation requirements, I think that's a broad discussion. Kids with disabilities that meet those requirements are subject to the same exit considerations as kids without disabilities. Are kids that are in 18 to 21-year-old programs? There is a national discussion about what happens to the kid that's turning 21 that is aging out in this environment. And the federal government has not given us any guidance on that yet.
So I'm hearing right now, these kids are in limbo.
Right now, these, right now, we're being advised to make decisions based on pre-COVID, pre-COVID trajectories. So kids that were eligible for ESY will be eligible for ESY. Kids that would have been eligible to age out of there because they've turned 21, you know, months ago, would still be eligible to age out.
So I just want to make sure, because if you're aging out right now, I just want to make sure you capture the policy that if you're aging out right now, that we have a timeline that accommodates where you were in the process of this crisis.
Correct. And I don't think it belongs in this policy because that's going to be federal, that'll be federal guidance when it comes out, if there's any change to our current exit policies. So this would not replace the eligibility to exit and the process by which a PPT makes a decision to exit a kid.
What does that federal timeline look like for that decision? And how many kids in the district now are in? I just want to make, yeah, what does that timeline look like?
So we probably have about 40 kids in our 18 to 21-year-old program in total, of which maybe four or five of them are aging out. And there are maybe two or three kids in out-of-district programs with very intensive disabilities that are scheduled to age out. We've been doing intensive transition work with them pre-COVID. You know, you don't transition at 21 in a month. You know, that, that's a long process. So their next steps are already planned and they will be exited. Frank, you're mute.
Thank you. Godfrey, we also have a handful of high school students who are 21 or near 21, over 20. And I don't think those numbers are anywhere near the 18 to 21 program that Yvette's talking about. But we, we do have several in high school.
And they automatically will have the ability to transition into the adult high school graduation program if they were to age out of the public school setting, but they'd still be able to continue their coursework in our adult program.
Okay.
So if you take a look at the policy, you'll see where this highlighted paragraph has been struck and moved to the top of the policy. And then I think we need to develop the sentence below that with Brenda Myers' help and with your help. The primary purpose, I've been calling it remote learning just to designate the difference between distance learning and what this is. So the primary purpose of remote learning during this, and I mean, it would be emergency.
Yeah, and I think we take out this and we put during an emergency closure because we want to not situate it as just one. They were using this as a reference to COVID-19, but we broadened it out to be emergency.
Okay. During an emergency closure?
Mm-hmm.
And then, do we want to add anything here, Brenda, do you think?
Well, I was, the other part of the paragraph, we moved up. And so I'm not sure where this, is this going to be like an introduction? Because I think really, the Board of Education recognizes students may be required to learn remotely is a good opening. I'm not sure that the primary purpose comes before it, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good point. This could actually follow this opener if we wanted to tie in any components of the strategic operating plan.
It seems repetitive to me, the two paragraphs.
What are your thoughts also? You know, we don't want to be repetitive, but we also want to make sure that we capture all the necessary information. Brenda and Frank, what are your thoughts, and Yvette, on if it's repetitive? Or if we can somehow combine it into the first one of your thoughts on that?
I think the difference between the two paragraphs are in this, this paragraph that I'm highlighting is talking broadly about how during a closure, the district would still look to achieve the vision of the school system. Whereas this paragraph is just being a bit more specific that the board recognizes that during such an emergency, remote learning is the mechanism for achieving that vision.
It goes from district to student.
I personally think we should keep that. Policy members, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I'm in favor of.
Okay.
Maybe we keep it basic and say, is to continue to support the vision and mission of the school district.
Or the vision and mission of the school district will be supported in the event that remote learning is required during an emergency closure.
If you prefer that, we can go with that. You would just have to say that again, Yvette.
I agree. Good, though. Good verbiage, though.
The vision and mission of the school district will continue in the event that, and then you have remote learning is required during an emergency closure. And then the rest comes in.
That looks good, I think. It's a lot smoother. I think that looks good. Kind of says it all.
Nice job.
Good.
Okay.
Right.
And then you can say the district will make every, you know, then next part, then the next paragraph can go, I don't know that they need to be separate paragraphs. That's where.
I think what, I'll just go ahead and delete this if you guys are okay with that.
Yes.
And I'll do the same here. Okay, and Yvette, this portion here?
So what I did is I took the language from federal requirements of guarantees and assurances that LEAs need to make whenever they're in receipt of federal funds. And it has two primary focuses. One is that whatever the school district chooses to do should be done with assurances that its materials, its platforms, its protocols are accessible. And the second is that that accessibility has to happen at the same time as other children receive materials or platforms. So I just basically tweaked and copied and paid, I copied and pasted and tweaked the federal guarantee.
Thank you for adding it.
And I think that's exactly what you were getting at with regard to the, some of the specialized assistive technology equipment.
This is, before I continue, Godfrey, Diana, Heidi, anything you want to question or comment on before we move on with this paragraph?
No, I don't.
Nothing that jumps out?
Nope.
I'm good, too. I read it earlier.
Yep.
Okay. This next section is high school credit related. We struck it last time. I'm prepared to just remove it here. Makes sense?
And I mentioned, I mentioned IEPs and PPTs a little bit later, so it's repetitive.
Yes.
Whoops. Maybe I should hold off on doing that. I'll go back in afterward just to make sure remote has replaced distance. This was previously struck, so get rid of that. And then we have a couple of more sections here that are specialized learning related.
So it's repeating, except, so it goes from the broad district. This comes down to individual students. And I added that, as documented by IEPs of 504. And we may want to cut some of the repetitive language out. I didn't, when I first put it in, it was a page and a half after. Now it's a paragraph after, but we can look at it. And then the next talks about any virtual libraries has, have to be, have to have accessible materials. And again, at the same time as anybody else receives materials.
Dr. Myers, are you there? Any, any comment here?
Looks great.
It's good. And how about board members?
I think it looks good. I do. I read it over earlier as well.
Yep, same here.
Okay. All right, Frank, continue.
Okay. What you see here is the grading policy during emergency closures. Brenda has reviewed, I believe, all of this with you. It's just been copied and pasted into the document.
Okay.
Give you a couple of moments to look, take a look at it.
Erica, I did want you to know, I did research that question about the athletic policy just to make sure that I understood the impact. And actually, I think this policy benefits our kids because. Because they do need to, to be able to play sports next year. They have to have a one point seven GPA, right? So that GPA still matters, but with grade bracing, it will advantage some of our students and it won't penalize them. So that, that, that would still be maintained. It is not in this policy because we're not making any change to it.
Okay, thank you.
I like it.
Appreciate you going back and looking that up for me.
Scott Hurwitz was my reference point.
He's the best, right?
Absolutely.
I think it looks great. I really do. I think it's very comprehensive, kind of says it and lays it out. So I, I really think it looks quite good on this.
Any, any comments before moving forward?
I also like the way it's numbered as well. It's just easy to look at and you can kind of look at it as a glance and it makes sense the way it's numbered and the way it's worded. So I think it looks really good. I agree.
So I probably should have been doing this already, but. We're going to turn that. This. I'll clean up the yellow here.
Okay.
We're not waiting. Okay, here's page two of this section.
I would just make one comment. Heidi had shared with us, I think, the Wilton story. And if you've watched some of the conversations around the state of Connecticut around grading. I just thought that the board had been really supportive of our students. There are some places where there's quite a debate about, you know, making sure that students earn the grade. And, and you know, and I think we've really recognized a balance here that students can show their acceleration. But we also understand this is a difficult time and there's an equity issue for many of our students. And so I thought the balance and the board's support was really very helpful in this.
Yes, thank you, Brenda.
On my end, I know there's a few families that are very worried about the grade bracing. Because they feel that some students were gonna just fall behind. Because we're going to be happy with whatever grade they have at that moment and strive to move forward.
Well, the beautiful thing about this is, is that there are only a few weeks left of school. And we've been collecting grades right along. So there wasn't like this predetermined, the minute you walked out, your grade was braced. We actually are positioning ourselves that in the second full week of May. We'll actually tell students what their braced grade is so that they know what they can improve on. And so we, we really feel that our students have been, and our teachers have been giving feedback to kids continually supporting them. And that they still need to be able to do the work that the teacher has given them. When we were talking to principals again this week, we're not really seeing students who are just saying, I'm going to just, I'm, I'm going to, now that I was, I was an A student and now I'm just not going to do anything, right? The other thing too is please note, that's why we left in passing with distinction. Because for some students that are at the A level, being able to have that distinguishing feature on their transcript matters to them as well. So we tried to address that issue there too.
Thank you.
If we're not seeing any reason to make any adjustments to this, I'll go ahead and change the font here too, or the. The color of the font. I don't see a reason why we need this. But I left it in and.
We may, we may get a family that disputes. And. It may be appropriate to put in some procedure, you know, they can appeal to the principal and if they still dispute. It, does it end with the principal or is there a district level review?
So, but this particular language is about approval of the.
Right.
And that's not something that a, a parent can, can say, I don't, I don't want Algebra One curriculum, right? And we certainly don't do that in a regular scenario and we wouldn't want to start doing that in distance learning. Because this is an emergency policy and the understanding is we are implementing the curriculum and content and courses. That were in place prior to the emergency, this really doesn't have a place in this policy.
I, I agree.
My question was about grading, not curriculum. So if this refers to curriculum, absolutely. Agree with you.
My question was. And it's very specific to this event and the time in which it's hitting. But should we put into this policy the criteria for how we're evaluating summer school in the context of grade bracing? And the triangulation we talked about in the last board meeting? And I know like if this hits again in the second phase in December, it's not relevant, summer school evaluations and that triangulation that you were talking about. But it will leave anywhere else.
Actually, it's actually in a different board policy. You actually have a policy on summer school. And in that policy, you give us authority on an annual basis to actually set guidelines and to make proposals about expanding service. So I think that as opposed to being in the distance learning policy, you, you already have a really good language around that. And what it does is it does say that we will use the twenty-fifth percentile as our benchmark. For determining that students need summer academy, right? But it does allow us different measures for determining that twenty-fifth percentile. But that would be a different policy to review.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure it's covered somewhere.
Yeah, and I think that that summer school policy may not even prescribe the, the benchmark for determining it. I think our revision allows the chief academic officer to determine what that. You know, what percentage below the average should be required to attend summer school. But Dr. Myers is correct. I, I think it's a, it's separate from here. Going back to this paragraph, can we just remove this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know if we need this sentence.
I agree, in not, in, in, not in an emergency policy.
So I'll just remove that.
Yeah, the first sentence is really important. Like that's part of what we have to keep asking ourselves after this. Is, is how effective is it? You know, what did we learn from it? And what are the gaps our children are showing?
Right, and if this is, you know, God forbid, a two-year. Situation. At some point, we'll have to figure out how to evaluate professionals in this new, in this new environment.
I also will add, if we need to come back and revise this policy, once it's passed by the full board, then, then we will need to do that as well. And we can also add different, you know, add additional language if needed.
So the four bullets below it aren't specific to an emergency situation, right? So we can strike those.
Well, one, this word, I see. There's one about instructor. Oh, here it is. This one is important. So if we go, if we go to remote learning, we want to be sure that there's a certified Connecticut, Connecticut certified teacher. That's responsible for each classroom of students.
Or provision of any services.
Right.
I think that's going to need to go up a little bit farther up in the policy though, as opposed to after the grading.
This section, this four bullet section?
I think the one point that you draw out about the qualities of the instructors should go up earlier. And that, I think that's important, but it's up where we were talking about mission and vision. This alignment with the courses and I just, it seemed like it had a nice flow up there with some of the other text that you had. So they're taught by teachers who are certified. Because it's kind of in addition to that, isn't it? Teachers that are certified.
Yeah, I'm just looking for it.
Yeah, right, right there. Last line of that paragraph, you just slid by, right there. So it says, the courses are taught by teachers who are certified in the state and other state, but then that other piece might supplement that nice.
Okay, I'm not sure why it did that, but. Let's put it here.
So I guess it comes back to, we're not actually approving a course. But what we are saying is that each course shall be based upon the Connecticut academic standards. And I mean, that's that. That's. That's really what the essence of this policy says, right?
Yeah, I think that takes care of it. Okay, so we'll, we'll keep moving. Get rid of that. I'll get that here. Okay, here we are. Actually, we probably should go back and make sure. So this was taken and copied and pasted up above. And we have this. I don't think this really applies.
Yeah, I think that additional language section now can go.
Okay, and then this is the final, the final piece, respecting privacy during remote learning. And you, you have probably seen the communication that's gone out to all parents. Who have reviewed this. I'm going to need to go in and change. Where I see distance here, but take a few moments to look through this.
Do we want to put in?
Go ahead, Avet.
To maintain student privacy and to comply with FERPA. Requirements.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. I'm just looking for the placement.
It would be. Last sentence of the second paragraph, students. To maintain student privacy, up, up a little further, Frank, right there.
Here.
And, yep, and to. Comply with FERPA requirements.
To maintain student privacy.
And to ma- and to. Comply with FERPA requirements.
Now, outside of this section, I want to pull to the committee around the need. That be explicit around mentioning teachers' expectations around mandated reporting during times of. Remote or emergency. School changes, you know, just to be, I, I think, you know, the fact that this is an emergency policy. And there's nothing specified in here mentioned around just the safety of the kid. I thought at least worthwhile to talk about how we would insert expectations for. These many reporting to continue out during this time. And, you know, knowing how that looks differently. Being very mindful of the things that are going to be seen just through the privacy language. But again, I think it's, too many points is captured here.
I think that that's a really good point. And I think it protects the district if we have a sentence or two. That covers the fact that our certified employees should. Maintain their same level of responsibility. We may even want to ask Tom Mooney or someone for specific language around that. So if, if the committee is okay with that, I, I would be happy to. Share this policy with Tom. And he'll be, he'll be impressed that we've gotten this policy together as quickly as we have. But to develop some, some language around that, Godfrey.
Yeah, that'd be great, you know, just so, it's definitely approved, you know, in this piece that we're going to vote on. Because I just think as we move forward into the next phases, a sentence or two or something has explicit around what procedures. Need to be carried out within this time of remote learning. Acknowledging the short term and the influx of it, I think it's critically important.
Hey, Avet, do we need to add HIPAA after FERPA?
I just responded to you.
Oh, you did, okay.
We're dealing with educational records, not medical records, so FERPA covers our responsibility.
Okay, got, okay, just use.
And Frank, I don't know if there's anything changed now on the DCF website or just within, you know. Some of the things discussed in provider meetings around what it looks like now, you know, in times of accessing services. But I think, you know, a starting point, you know, us being consistent with what the providers are communicating to our youth and families. Would be a good and starting point, you know, around language to capture for how it visibly looks.
Godfrey, I've had to make a couple of calls. Or guide some parents through very difficult situations in the past, you know, month or weeks. And they are only taking on the most dangerous situations. Because they are so limited, but it doesn't stop us from reporting or assisting parents to. Leave no stone unturned if they need voluntary help.
You know, my concern also is just to be able to give some concreteness, you know, to teachers who care that would be in your position. You know, if presented with this, just so there's no feeling of the absence of a system and a protocol, you know, just. Clear for both parties. Because I can only imagine how many more of our support people staff are experiencing or have experienced or scared to experience what you just described.
So, so Frank, when we wrote those procedures, the guidelines for attendance and asking the police to do well check. You know, well, visit checks, we had language in there reminding staff that they continue to be mandated reporters. So maybe that sentence can be pulled right from the attendance protocol that we wrote.
We can. The, the question will be where, where we want to insert that language.
I would imagine we have a policy on mandated reporting already. So if we.
We do.
Down here, we could reference the policy that we already have, but we can make it the last sentence maybe. And then make that reference, because this doesn't change that requirement.
Exactly.
Right.
Hey Brenda, on the elementary school section, just, I think we're going back up one page. Should we add any requirements amount maintaining records? And I'm asking for the kids with packets, which hopefully will be a short-term thing. But like right now, I'm, I'm flooded with papers right now. And I honestly don't know if I have to keep all of them. Like, is there a risk of some parents who've thrown them out and they have to be turned in? Like, how is that gonna work?
Yeah, so in the, as you can see in the grading policy, this is the same thing that happens in a classroom on a daily basis when a teacher is sending papers home or has some work, but they're actually completing the report card. So if the teacher is pulling something for evaluation and feedback, they would have told you that. You don't have to maintain all of those papers. And sometimes what they're doing with students is they're doing the individual conferencing on those pieces of paper. So they don't actually see them, they don't actually like get, physically take them. So they're not part of a grading policy. And you'll notice the virtual work is not either, right? So in our grading policy, we still leave it up to the teacher to be using good assessment practices to be able to look at the growth and progress of students. And for younger kids, that's a lot more about conferencing and conferring, right?
Okay, that's helpful. I think a lot of parents are hanging on to these packets, not knowing, you know, you know, what to do with them and, you know, waiting until the report card comes out to get rid of them.
Separate from the policy, it's a good thing for me to talk to principals about. They might wanna put, we'll put a little notice out as we're talking to parents.
I have more papers in my house than I have square footage at this point.
Dr. Myers, I think that's a great suggestion to kind of reach out to principals on each individual school, especially for our younger learners that are still receiving the packets. So I think getting and disseminating that information out so they know what parents can do. I think Erica brought up a good point, you know, you have all this extra paper, what do we do? You know, do we discard it? Do we hold on to it till the end? So that might ease some concern, not necessarily in the policy, but as a separate dialogue with our principals, I think would be important.
Thanks.
And the principals have had input at all three levels on the grading as well as they've received the policy draft. So they're, they're in the loop on the work that our committee is doing.
Well, that's why I think it's also so important, we've discussed this during our board meetings, how to have tablets for our youngest learners. I mean, I think at this point, I know we're working on it, but I think it'll be critically important for the continued success of this, especially if we have another round of this and ensuring that they have that access.
Well, I think we've made a, a real dent in this. How do we want to move this forward? We have the one piece that I will, I will email this policy to Tom Mooney and ask him for his suggestion on how we can either reference the mandated reporting policy or what we already have in place or, or add some language to a portion of this policy that covers the district. And then I think this policy is ready to be reviewed by the full board. Do, Heidi, do you want to vote on the policy tonight? And I, I will just, I will send an updated policy to you with Tom Mooney's can go on as a first read for Tuesday?
Yeah, I think, and, and I'll talk to my fellow committee members, but I think that would be a great suggestion. I think we've, I think it's been a cohesive group as far as working on this policy between the policy committee members, yourself, Brenda, Annie Vett, as well as Brenda Wilcox. So I think working on this and also getting all the feedback that we've had and the continued discussion, I think it's a very comprehensive policy at this point. And I think if you can have that conversation with Tom Mooney and send us his suggestions, I think we can move forward. And again, I'll talk to the policy committee members as well, but move this forward for a first read to the board, because there'll be further discussion, obviously, and then the subsequent meeting after that hopefully will be approved and then we will have this policy set. So policy committee members, do you agree with that? Can we move this forward? And Frank will have a conversation with Tom Mooney on some of the language regarding mandated reporting. Because I know Frank that we had a pretty comprehensive policy on mandated reporting. I know we spent a lot of time on that policy. So we, I'm sorry, Godfrey, Diana and Erica, are you in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I was, just one reminder for the committee, the hard stop for us really is an approval by the board by May 19th. And the reason I say, I say that is because if we, we don't have another voting meeting until after grades are issued.
Yeah, I think it's important to get this moved through. I think we've spent ample time on this and it was important for us, especially as we discussed on a Friday night, our first ever meeting of any sorts that I know of. But I think we realized the importance of having this meeting and discussing it again. And then, as we all mentioned, to have it move forward to the full board for first read and discussion. So are there any other comments or thoughts before we move this forward?
So we're moving forward as a version that includes a statement from Tom Mooney?
Correct, correct. We're gonna look at our mandated reporting policy and figure out if we want to add some of that language on to this. And Frank is gonna reach out to Tom. Okay, do we have, do we all agree? Can we move this forward? Do I have a motion to approve the distance learning, learning policy to the full board for discussion? Thank you, so moved. Excellent, this is a really, really good meeting that we had tonight. We've had great other meetings before prior to this, but I think we really delved into this policy tonight. And I have to say, I used up most of my ink printing this out the other day with all the different red, yellow and all the different colors. But going through this and, and having the highlighted portion, I think was really important. And Frank, if I can also mention, and I know we've discussed this before, but any comprehensive or larger policy, if we can have page numbers on it. I know when I print a double copy to save paper and then kind of work through it, but I think it's helpful to have page numbers that's just kind of easier to review. So if we can work on that moving forward for any of our newer policies that we have, especially some of our larger policies. Thank you so much. Certainly takes a village and I think we were able to, and I appreciate Brenda, Vett and Frank, as well as Godfrey, Diana and Erica moving this forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Great, second, all in favor? Perfect, thank you everybody, have a wonderful evening. Thank you.